So we're going to go ahead and call this meeting to order this evening. First, I would ask Mr. Harris for a roll call of the members.
Yes, Mr. President. Mr. Ballantyne?
Here.
Ms. Craig?
Here.
Ms. Diaz?
Here.
Mr. Gepara?
Here.
Mr. Smith-Wadeell?
Here.
Mr. Soto?
Here.
And President Reichenbach?
Here.
Approval of the October 7, 2019 committee meeting minutes?
Motion to approve?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Council comments from the public? Hearing none. Mr. Harris.
Mr. Ballantyne?
Aye.
Ms. Craig?
Aye.
Ms. Diaz?
Aye.
Mr. Gepara?
Aye.
Mr. Smith-Wadeell?
Aye.
Mr. Soto?
Aye.
And President Reichenbach?
Aye. I would ask for my councilor's indulgence to make a slight modification, and I'll ask for a vote on the committee meeting agenda this evening. We have some interested parties to discuss the Committee Planning Committee, and that may take a little longer. So I would ask if we could move Finance Committee and Public Works Committee above and take those after Personnel so that if there are people here that want to complete those, that they'd be able to go on with their evening. Could I have a motion to do that?
So moved? Second.
Motion and second. Any council comments from the public? Hearing none. Mr. Harris.
Mr. Ballantyne?
Aye.
Ms. Craig?
Aye.
Ms. Diaz?
Aye.
Mr. Gepara?
Aye.
Mr. Smith-Wadeell?
Aye.
Mr. Soto?
Aye.
And President Reichenbach?
Aye. Thank you for that. And with that, we will move right into Personnel Committing, and I'll hand it over to Counsel Soto. Thank you for stepping in.
Thank you, Mr. President. At this time, I will open a Personnel Committee. We have six items on the agenda this evening, starting with Mr. Techno-Darkus nominee for reappointment to the Convention Center Authority. Do we want to take these as a whole?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, Ken.
Carl Pike Christian, Carl Pike Christian Kermit, and Ashley E. Spott nominees for reappointment to the Shade Tree Commission. Harold H. Bauer Jr. and Jean Kirk. Wigglers?
Wigglers.
Wigglers. Nominee for reappointment to the Lancaster Municipal Authority. Jean Kirk Rutzgart nominee for reappointment to the Higher Education Authority. And Robert Henry Diggs III nominee to reappointment to the Human Relations Commission. And Council Resolution Number 63, 2019, reappointing Rudy D. Laurentis to the Sony hearing board. Can I have a motion to move these forward?
So moved?
Second.
All in favor?
Hold on just one second. I'm sorry. Before we move forward, Mr. Harris, do we have a couple other things to add on to those?
Yes, we do, Mr. President. We had two late additions to Personnel. The first is Ben Bamford for reappointment to the Lancaster Industrial Development Authority, and Michelle Kane, reappointment to the Lancaster Housing Authority.
Okay. So we have Ben Bamford with the Lancaster Industrial Authority?
Industrial Development Authority. And Michelle Kane, reappointment to the Lancaster City Housing Authority.
Okay. So with the committee's indulgence, would it be okay to add those names to the list and then make that with one vote? So feel free, Counsel, if you'd like to add those two names on. Lancaster Industrial Development Authority, Ben Bamford, and Lancaster City Housing Authority, Michelle Kane, to the list that you already read.
I just want to include those as my recommendation for approval moving forward to City Council meeting next week.
Yep. So moved.
Is there anybody here for these appointments?
I did not ask them to attend for reappointments now.
I'm sorry, Randy.
I did not ask them to attend for reappointments.
Okay.
So I believe we had a motion from Counsel Smith-Wadeell, and I believe Counsel Diaz is the other member of your committee. So Counsel Diaz, would you be able to second?
Yes, I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So moved? That's all I have for Personnel Committee?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Sure. We will move right into Finance Committee with Counsel Ballantyne.
Thank you, Mr. President. Finance has three things on the agenda today. The first, starting with Administration Resolution Number 64, appointing auditors for 2019 through 2021.
Okay. Good evening. This is fairly straightforward. Every three years, City Council has a task to reappoint auditors for the annual, excuse me, the annual audit that we have done, which includes the general fund, all the city's operating funds, as well as all of the city's federally funded programs, CDBG and others. The Mayor Dussel, as all of you know, has been the city's auditor for a number of years, actually dates back to 2004. They have done an extremely good job with the work that they do for us, and you all see it one time during the year when Representative from Mayor Dussel does the audit presentation. But our accounting staff relies on them throughout the year to, you know, get advice from them, get input on certain accounting functions that they, accounting activities that they have to do during the year to make sure that we're doing everything properly. And I asked a couple months ago from Mayor Dussel to put together a proposal for an additional three-year appointment. The cost of the annual audit this year was $62,280 with an additional $4120, which is the cost of their review of the component unit audits, the Rec Commission, Downtown Investment District Authority, and a few others. The proposal includes an increase, an annual increase for each of the three years of 3%. So during that three-year period of 3% increase each year, if you look out over the total of the time that Mayor Dussel has been doing the city's audit, it actually, their total cost increase from 2004 through what would be 2021 audit is about a 1.5% increase each year. So I think it's been very much in line with, actually a little bit below what we've seen inflationary-wise.
Thank you. Any questions from committee? From full council? The public? Hearing none, I make a motion to move this to full council next Tuesday.
Second.
Motion to approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. We'll move on to Administrative Resolution Number 65, amending the 2018 Capital Improvement Plan to Fund Collington Park Improvement.
Okay. So there are actually, there are two items on this resolution, and this resolution is related to the next item on the agenda, Administrative Bill Number 16. So as you know, we've had ongoing plans for renovations at Collington Park. We had actually had received bids in September, I believe it was, based on the original design, redesign of the park, including the work at the pool, new playground structure, a lot of green infrastructure work, you know, redoing the softball field, and a number of other improvements, lighting improvements at the park. Those original bids came in at a little over $3.7 million, which was well above what we had preliminary, had in our preliminary estimates. So Matt Metzler and other folks in Public Works Department have gone back and done some work to try to reduce the cost of the project. What we're working to do is get it down into the $3 million range, so to take about 3/4 of a million dollars off of the project. Additionally, as you know, there was an R cap, $500,000 R cap that was originally awarded to SOE, and that has since been reprogrammed to go into the improvements at Collington Park. So we have an additional $500,000 of funds that we didn't have in this project initially. So what this amendment is doing, the first one of these two amendments is doing, is adding an additional $785,000 of funds from the 2018 bond issue to go into this Collington Park project. That combined with the R cap grant and a number of other grants that we have for the park brings us up to a total of $3 million of funding, and that would ultimately be where we need the project to come in. So if bids come in, again, somewhere in that neighborhood, Public Works folks will work to get the price down to or right around $3 million.
Thank you. Any questions from the committee? Go ahead.
I just wanted to add that part of the process in reducing the budget for Collington Park involved the SOE neighbors and as a community stakeholder group. And so we literally went through each component part to this, and it wasn't just the city determining the changes that were going to be made to the scope of the project. There was a lot of give and take to get us down to a more reasonable level. I'll also add, and I might have missed Patrick saying this, but we are rebidding the total park project in an effort to recover and to benefit from all of the changes that we've made, rather than doing, going through change orders. And the last piece that I want to say is just, we're really committed to getting this park going. There have been so, so many neighborhood meetings and engagement, I think more than any other park in the city, and I feel really great about that process and ready to just get this moving along, so.
Thank you, Mayor. Any questions from the committee?
Sorry, I just, I wanted to add on the other piece of this amendments here, which is adding a project to the list also. So adding a project to the approved list that was originally done with the 2018 bond issue. As you know, more than a year ago, we moved all of our staff out of the Fairview Avenue Streets building for reasons that were obvious to anybody who ever walked in or got near that building. Now we are at the place of needing to also get everything else out of that building. So there's a lot of document storage and other things that are stored at that facility that we need to get out of there. We have a property that we own on Beaver Street that has, for decades, been where the Water Transmission and Distribution staff have worked. And if you ever got to see the circus in the morning and the evening that they had of moving their cars in and out, Counselman Soto knows what I'm talking about, you'd be impressed with their work. Those folks and all their equipment have since moved over to the new Water Administration Building off of Pittney Road. So that property is freed up to be repurposed for a city storage facility. And this is the part that relates to Administrative Bill Number 16. Part of the sale of the properties on Chesapeake Street to Thaddeus Stevens College of Technology included an additional payment to the city this year that we received. The additional total is going to be $1 million. We've received $860,000 so far this year. That was money that was not included in the 2018, or I'm sorry, the 2019 budget. So we are doing this amendment to move $600,000 from the general fund into the Capital Improvement Fund, because this is a project that'll occur over 2019 and 2020. And then I'll explain the rest of it when we get to Administration Resolution Number 16, or I'm sorry, the ordinance Number 16.
Any questions from full council? From the public? Hearing none, I make a motion to move this through full council next Tuesday.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And now we move on to Administrative Bill Number 16, appropriating funds for Collington Park Improvement.
Okay. So the title of that was off, this is actually appropriating funds for the storage facility. City Council has the authority to do supplemental appropriations when we have unbudgeted revenues to put toward a specific project or projects. So with this, and that has to be done by ordinance, because it's much like the budget ordinance, it's an appropriation. So this appropriation ordinance just states that $600,000 of unbudgeted revenues will get put to the 2018 Capital Improvement Plan Bond Fund.
Any questions from the committee members? From full council? Or from the public?
Yeah. As somebody who lives in the SOE neighborhood, along with many of our members, we're rather concerned about the concentration within that neighborhood of gentrification that's happening and how it's actually displacing many people very rapidly. And so have you calculated what the outcome in that aspect when it comes to the park being remodeled and all that that entails? Like as far as property value, which could raise rents, or any of the other outcomes that could happen? And if so, are we prepared for the repercussions for more people being displaced, like our friends, Bill and Carol?
So I just want to clarify, what we're on right now is this resolution, or I'm sorry, the ordinance, this is for appropriating funds for the storage facility, not the Collington Park project.
Right. I'm aware of that. I just needed to make, as somebody who lives a block and a half away from that park, I needed to make this statement in regards to the whole project that is happening.
Thank you. Tim, you had a question?
So again, appropriating funds for public park improvements is just straight up wrong.
Yes, yes. For the storage facility.
Okay. Any other questions? Hearing none, I make a motion to move this to full council next Tuesday.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Hopkins. That concludes Finance. Mr. President?
Thank you, Counsel Ballantyne. We'll move right into Public Works Committee. Counsel Gepara?
Thank you, Mr. President. The Public Works Committee has two resolutions on the agenda tonight. Administration Resolution Number 61, 2019, accepting the Green Light Go grant from the State Transportation Department, and I believe Ms. McCormick.
Yes, thank you. So we received, we were awarded a Green Light Go grant from PennDOT related to re-timing our traffic signals and upgrading, adding some detection at some of the locations. So the downtown or signal system, which includes over 90 intersections, we have one timing plan that runs 24/7 every day of the year, so, and that hasn't been updated in probably decades. So we're looking at doing this work that would collect data on traffic volumes and retime the signals to provide multiple signal timing plans to improve the operations through the city. So different times of day or different traffic situations. And then the detection that we're looking at would be able to let us monitor those traffic volumes to be more responsive to conditions that may happen, you know, related to traffic. So we have been awarded $691,000 and $691,760, and we are required to have a 20% match for that.
That was my next question. Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, and that's in the range of $155,000 is the match that would be required.
Questions from the committee? Full council? From the public? Public?
It would take, I would say, six months to a year till we got all the proper approvals from PennDOT and designs, and so maybe next year this time?
Any other questions from the public?
I just have one question. As far as the video cameras, is that going to be part of the safety coalition as well? Is that separate? Two separate items here?
Yeah, they're separate. It would just be used for the traffic network, for detecting volumes of vehicles and that kind of stuff.
Thank you.
Anything else? And then I'd like to make a motion to move Resolution Number 61, 2019, to full council.
Second.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Thank you. And Administration Resolution Number 62, 2019, authorizing an application for multimodal grant from the State Department of Transportation.
Okay. We are currently putting together an application for the multimodal grant with PennDOT. We are suggesting that it would be related to the bike network. We'd like to improve our wayfinding, so signage and pavement markings to help identify where the bike network is located and show, you know, people where it is. And then also, we're looking at making improvements to select intersections on the bike network. This includes the current roundabout at Plum and Park and New Street, looking at making that a more permanent installation. Also, improvements at Strawberry and Vine and Lime and Juniata, maybe artful intersections and just some improvements to those intersections to make them, highlight them in the bike This is a grant that requires a 30% match, and our current estimates have $943,550 as the total project cost. So we would be requesting $660,000.
I see that's blank in the...
Right. We were still working on that, so. We were still working on it, but we do have those final numbers, it just didn't get in the resolution yet.
Thank you. Any comments from committee? From full council? From the public? Hearing none, I'd like to move Administration Resolution Number 62 to full council.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you, and that concludes Public Works.
Thank you.
And then we will move right into Community Planning Committee with Counsel Smith-Wadeell.
Thanks. Oh, boy. Here we go. Do me a favor, real quick. If you're here to talk about Yule Plaza, raise your hand. Okay. That looks like everybody. Beautiful. So there's 70 of you, so, which does not go unnoticed. But to that point, I'm going to ask, as with a normal council meeting, that comments be limited to three minutes, because if each of you keeps within that three-minute timeframe, that's only 210 minutes and will only be here until 10:00. So maybe we can do a little better than that, but I am going to go ahead and ask that public comment be limited to three minutes, and I'll be keeping my timer up here. Don't want to cut anybody off, but at a certain point, a certain length of comment will abridge the right to comment of people commenting at the end, because we'll all need to go home. What we're going to start with are the two entities that might be considered to have... Let me start again. We're going to start with a presentation from the city, the Public Art Board, and the Parking Authority, who are represented up here. We're then going to hear from representatives of the Historical Commission. These two bodies will be available for questions to members of the committee and council. Once we've satisfied that, we will open it up to public comment from all of you lovely people. Thank you for being here and bearing with. This is not, this is not the easiest such thing that we've had to rule on, nor necessarily the most fun, but it will probably be very interesting and very instructive for our future. With that, oh, I should say, would you all please, I think you've all been individually directed to this, use this podium here so that you may address the dais and the room at the same time? We'll ask members of the public to use this podium here. Both mics are live. If you need a second mic there, there's a button on the bottom of that one. Thank you. Mr. Cohen?
Good evening, everyone. I'm Larry Cohen, Executive Director of the Parking Authority. We are here tonight to present for recommendation to full City Council, your approval for the certificate of appropriateness for our 151 North Queen Street project. The project is the construction of a new six-story, 360-space parking facility, a 40,000-square-foot, two-level, new public library and commercial space, which will bring to fruition the last piece of the revitalization of the old Lancaster Square. On October 21, the Historical Commission voted to recommend denial of our application due to components of the public art, which will be discussed in detail tonight. I want to let you know that the Parking Authority supports public art and will provide funding at 2% of the overall construction cost of the project, equaling $600,000 for the public art component. To provide background on Yule Plaza and the public art process, Chris Delft and Joanna Davis from the city are here to take you through an understanding of the process to date. I am also joined by our solicitor, Matt Cream, who can shed any light on any legal questions that might arise. So I use not even a minute. Chris, you're up.
Thank you, councilors, for the opportunity to speak with the committee this evening. I'm Chris Delft, I'm Director of Planning and Economic Development for the city. As you know, most of the discourse over the last few weeks has been about the public art concept, which has received a great deal of attention. But I believe it's important to take a step back and zoom out and set the public art in a broader context. We have a bird's-eye view, oh, thank you, a bird's-eye view of Yule Plaza and the 100 Block of North Queen Street here. The city is aiming to advance a land development effort on the 100 Block of North Queen Street, which is meant to serve as centerpiece of a larger downtown renaissance that has been underway for over a decade now. There are four main components to this multifaceted development. I'm going to see if my pointer works here. Okay. 101 North Queen, on the right side of the image here, is nearly complete, as you probably know. This has ground floor, intended for ground floor restaurant and retail, off the space above. If you go to the other side of the top of the image up here, outside of the graphic, sort of north of the square, is the Holiday Inn. There have been major renovations to the Holiday Inn, and there will be a connection via roof deck at this location here. There's pending reconstruction of Yule Plaza. And then finally, 151 North Queen, which is this L-shaped portion here, which Larry just spoke about, that is the public library project on the bottom two levels, and then with parking structure above. It is in this area here, where the public art is proposed on the facade of that building. It is 151 North Queen, this piece right here, that is before the committee tonight. It is the land development as a whole. It is not only the public art project. It includes the library, the parking structure, and the public art as well. With respect to the public art, it's important to recognize upfront that we're doing something rather unprecedented in the city. We will be integrating public art into the facade of a building during construction. The reason why we are doing that is it gives us a tremendous opportunity to save both cost on the project and to elevate the quality of public art design in the project. So this is a very exciting opportunity for us, both in terms of the public art, but stepping back and thinking about this as being the centerpiece of a development project for our downtown. At the same time that this is an exciting opportunity, doing something new has presented some process challenges as well. And I just wanted to take a moment and commend many organizational stakeholders. The Parking Authority has been willing to incorporate public art into the project. That is not always a typical thing. There have been a host of other organizational stakeholders who have worked together to make sure that the pieces of the puzzle are actually coming together properly. I also wanted to commend the citizens who volunteer on the Historical Commission and on the Public Art Board as well. They've all done a nice job carrying out their charge, and I see tonight's committee meeting as really an opportunity for the city administration and for the City Council to clarify the path ahead. The ultimate intent here through this project is to realize a vibrant focal point for the city by meshing all of these development components together. All these that I described earlier, around the square and the square itself, this is about making sure that these come together and they actually sing, and it's a place where people want to be. An iconic work of art in this space would go an extremely long way to achieving that aspiration. I will stop there. I think that I respected the three-minute limit there. I think that I respected the, the three-minute limit there, counselor, and I will turn it over to Joe Davis, our Public Art Manager, who may speak a little bit longer, because she's gonna get into the heart of the public art process. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
Hi, everybody. So, this project is a natural progression for our public art program. We have been working steadily for three years with these two major focus areas, making Lancaster Square place, now Yule Plaza, and integrating art into, into design and construction, which Chris really nicely explained why exactly integrating art into design and construction is a great idea for our city. Even though that we've been working on this for, for a while and thinking about it, it hasn't come easy for us to get to this point. It's taken a lot of research, a lot of thinking and deliberating about what is possible, and also too, you know, the owner of this building did not have to include public art in their building, so it took advocacy and it took a lot of encouragement to get us to this point. I want to start at the beginning, and that is with the planning for Yule Plaza. I think, council, we're all on the same page, where we see this plaza as a place for a public space, a really important space for our community, and also, you know, along with Mayor Serrachi's focus area of strong neighborhoods, it's a, it's a centrally-located place that people from every neighborhood can easily access and come together and, and connect, and that's important. So, we started with our extensive community outreach, unprecedented community outreach for this project, for the planning of Yule Plaza. We went, you know, we did the typical meetings and charrettes. We published information that was in Spanish and English. We, we met people where they were. We went, we went and celebrated Lancaster and had a huge presence there, gathering input, and then we went to neighborhood festivals and block parties and did our best to try to, try to reach as many communities as we could to get their input about what they wanted to see in Yule Plaza. And this is what we found out, people want public art, and they want it in a big way. So, you saw this image before. We knew that we wanted to incorporate public art into the plaza, and this building, right there, I can't, let me see if I can get it. There we go. This guy, 151 North Queen, presented a really wonderful opportunity for us to integrate public art into the design. If we could do it early on, it was gonna save a lot of cost, and we saw this, this structure as a, it's gonna be a prime focal point for the plaza. Whether you're in Binns Park or you're in the plaza, it's a, it's a great focal point and a wonderful place for the art. So this project has proceeded just like all of our public art projects, and just like nationally, how public art projects generally go, these are the steps. There's one difference. So we were hiring the artists at this point because this is such a significant project and because this is brand-new to our city, to do a project integrated into architecture at this magnitude, we wanted to take it slow. And so, the process that we have gone through has gotten artists to the beginning phase, a phase one of two phases in this project. Phase one was for the artists to design concepts, initial concept renderings, a feasibility study so that we could see how would this work out as we move forward. And then, they were given the condition if, that once hired, they could have the time and the space to start designing the work and seeing the project through to fruition. So, here's a little chronology for you. A selection committee was assembled in April. We did an artist search, we did an invitational RFQ, this is a very standard type of way to find artists for a project of this magnitude. What that means is that we did a national search for artists that would meet the qualifications for this project, and we asked them to apply to this project. They had to meet those qualifications, and I want to be really clear about what those were. We needed to find artists who had done exactly this type of work before. This is a very specific type of artwork. So we needed artists that had experience integrating their artwork into the infrastructure and architecture of a building, and we needed those candidates to have a lot of examples showing that they had done work just similar to this to be considered. They also needed to have stellar recommendations, and they needed to have really impressive resumes. So the selection committee looked at five artists and narrowed it down to three. Again, this RFQ was for the feasibility concepts, to think of some ideas, to, to get us moving and thinking about what, what it could look like to integrate art. R&amp;R studios were, were selected based on their high quality of work, stellar track record, every person that we talked to, so their amazing work with getting, getting, amazing job getting their work done on time and on budget, and also their native Spanish speakers, which was also important. So phase one happened in July, in the, the beginning of July, they visited and submitted concepts, and one was selected by the selection committee. That concluded the work of phase one. After that, the plaza was named after Barney Yule, and a budget was determined. So moving forward, we're just getting started here. This is the beginning of phase two, which would be the design work. This is the opportunity for the artists to come, have the time and space to visit, to more, they visit again, and for people to connect with them, and for community to get engaged, for community to give input. This is the beginning. And I want to be clear about community engagement, because we do a lot of that with our public art program. Community engagement looks different for different types of public art projects. Community engagement in neighborhoods, we use, it's, it's artists that use their talents to connect people, to start conversations, and it's usually neighbors really actively involved in the process. For some projects, it's, you're, you're, basically you're hiring an artist to do their job. So just like any employer hires an employee to do their job, they look for stellar qualifications, and they look for the best fit, and then they, they let the, the person that they've hired do their work. They trust them to do their work. So, from this initial feasibility concept, that's not even, not the design yet, we've already heard a lot of people that like it and people that don't like it. And that's great, that's to be expected. We have a diverse community, and everybody is entitled to their own opinion, and it would be really weird if we all had the same exact opinion, it'd be kind of freaky. Like, we should all, you know, we all are diverse and different. So, that is to be expected, and that's, and art is not meant to be liked by everybody, and it shouldn't be expected to be liked by everybody. I show you a few examples of some really well-known public art pieces that people were up in arms about when they first saw it, and, and they wanted to change it and they wanted to disrupt it, and the artists were allowed to see through with their vision. And I'm telling you this because it's really important to trust artists. Artists have an ability to see beyond what we see right now today, and today. This keeps moving us forward. So if we only see with the eyes of today, we will stay being stuck in today. So, from that initial concept, like I mentioned, we've gotten a lot of, there's been a lot of comments, and this is really good. Public art, it's gotten people to talk, it's gotten people to talk about, start conversations, really important ones, like the, like the identity of our city. All of this is really good stuff. And so, public art can start controversy, and councilors, I encourage you to embrace So, for everybody that is interested in learning more about the artwork, oh, I wanted to tell you one more thing, we'll stay on this. So, so, I encourage you to brace the, the, I really encourage you to brace the conflict, and I want to be clear, I want to be really clear that this, this vote, the vote that you're gonna make on Tuesday is not about whether or not you like the artwork, and it's really not necessarily just about this specific piece of artwork. What it's about is the, okay, my slide's not keying up. What your vote is about is, it's, it is about the work that the Public Art Board has been doing in the public art program, an award-winning public art program. So if you vote yes on Tuesday, what you're doing is empowering our Public Art Advisory Board, a board that council has created to do, do just this kind of work that they've done here, and you are empowering the work of that selection committee that spent so much time deliberating about this project and working through it, and all of the while, the Public Art Board and everybody following the ordinances and guidelines as they should. If you vote no on Tuesday, it will discourage developers to integrate art into their projects moving forward, and it will set our public art program back significantly. So, again, like I said, so it's not about the artwork right now, it's not about the artwork on Tuesday, but it is about the artwork on, on Saturday, November 4th. We're having an, an information session for people who want to give input, get involved, and learn about the facts, because frankly, there has been a lot of misinformation going around about this artwork, and so it's a chance to really engage, and we really encourage people to show up then. So, I want to thank everybody here who has been vocal about this project, who's been speaking up. That is, it's wonderful, and it's wonderful to see some people so passionate about public art, and I encourage you to get involved with our public art program. We have, we have open seats every, every, every board meeting at our Public Art Advisory Board meetings. Usually it's empty. Lately, Tim's been there a lot, so that's nice, we have some company. But I, I really encourage you to, you guys to show up and to volunteer and visit our website. There's tons of ways to get involved, and we have sign-up sheets. But I leave you with, councilors, please, to just, to trust the process, the public art process. Thanks.
Thank you, Joe.
Good evening, members of the committee, members of council. My name's Matt Cream, I'm Solicitor for the Lancaster Parking Authority, which is the applicant before you this evening, and at council, we hope next week, for the Certificate of Appropriateness for the approval of the architecture of this proposed library, parking garage, retail, and event space, the remaining component, the remaining vertical component of Yule Plaza. It does come to you with a recommendation of disapproval from the Historical Commission, and that recommendation is based on two distinct reasons. The first is that it doesn't meet the standards that they are charged to apply, standards two, rhythm and patterns, standard three, materials and textures, standard four, architectural details, and that the proposal is incomplete. I'll address the first, the second first. The art component of this larger project was given to the Parking Authority and its architect from the Public Art Advisory Board for the purpose of integrating the architecture necessary for the public art with the architecture for the larger structure. And because the Historical Commission is responsible for reviewing the architecture, we suggest to council that that's where it should focus, and that that component of the public art planning is complete. The materials and the structure for the public art is complete. The design of that material and structure that is incorporated into the overall architecture of this proposed building is complete. The image and the message of the art may still be in discussion, but the materials and the structure are complete. So the Historical Commission was presented with a complete design for its action. Regarding whether it meets the standards two, rhythm and patterns, three, materials and textures, four, architectural details, the Historical Commission provides you only with conclusions. They make no findings as to what are the rhythm and patterns of this 100 block of North Queen, what are the materials and textures of this 100 block of North Queen, the architectural details of this 100 block of North Queen, to which they may have compared what is proposed and unfortunately found lacking. What is agreed by everybody, as city staff has presented, as the Parking Authority has presented, is that this is an unprecedented proposal. This is the first opportunity by which the city is presented with public art which is integrated as an architectural part of a structure. Just by way of one example, you saw the, the Water Street murals. Those are examples of art applied to architecture. They're painted on, whereas this, for the first time, the city is presented with public art as an integrated part of architecture. One of the other things that everyone seems to agree on, and I will use as the basis for my concluding remarks, is that there is nothing historical about this 100 block of North Queen Street. The most telling remark was by a member of the public at the Historical Commission who said, "There is nothing historical about this block of North Queen Street," but I don't like that. And if the only thing we can agree on is that there is nothing historical about this block of North Queen Street, and that it is the first time the city is presented with this particular question, I suggest to the committee, and I suggest to members of council, that your discretion is unfettered. If it is about liking the art, we're not going to get to the next phase of this project. If it is about approving the architecture on which the art is going to be supported, and by which I mean, the image and the message of the art is going to be supported, your opinion is as good as anybody's, because there is nothing in this block to which the standards can be factually applied to reach the conclusion that the standards have not been met. You got nothing, except your opinion, your discretion is unfettered. We ask that the committee pass this on to the full council for next week's meeting, at which time we will ask council to approve a Certificate of Appropriateness so that the art component of this can be completed by that instrumentality of the city whose responsibility it is, the Public Art Advisory Board. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we, we're good? Okay, thank you. I will now ask the members of the Historical Commission, who provided the, the recommendation of denial, to come to the podium and provide us with background and information on the process and their decision.
My name is Christopher Peters, I'm Chair of the Historical Commission.
Actually, Chris, I'm sorry, let me stop you. Just, just to say, don't feel like, please don't feel constrained yourselves by, like, just tell us everything that we need to know.
Okay, sure.
Thank you.
I'll speak for a few minutes, and then Steve will come up and join me, have a few comments. I didn't realize I needed a fancy presentation in legal counsel tonight, but just to give a history of what was going on, we have, we were presented with a concept in May that was rendering, that actually the Commission generally approved of, it was conceptual, so we didn't vote on it, but I think if it would have been put before us to vote on it, it would have passed. It was generally well-received. In September, it was presented again for vote, and that's when it was changed drastically to include this new public art piece. So at that time, there was a lot of conversation, and in the interest to assist the applicant, we voted to table it with comments that said, "Can you come back next month and we can resolve this?" So in October, it came back, and we were informed that there would be no changes and no additional modifications at all, and we were to vote on what was previously presented. So, we did that. As was mentioned earlier, it did fail to meet, we voted against it six to one, because it failed to meet the design standards, and I would beg to differ, I think it's fairly obvious that, you know, design standard two, rhythm and patterns, reflecting the patterns of the neighborhood, whatever's around it at the city, bays, window placement, doors, cornices, that's all listed under there. It obviously does not comply with that. Materials and textures... Materials and textures, it obviously does not comply with the material and textures in the setting that it's in. And architectural details, referring to other character defining details in the area of the city, it obviously does not meet that. It was fairly obvious in September, and we tabled that in order so we wouldn't vote it down at that moment. And then we voted it down six to one in October. I did want to make that note, that it is different because while it is public art, it is the facade. And no matter if it's designed by an artist or under the guise of the art, the public art board, it is the facade, and we had to view it as the architectural facade, and it was under all these constraints. We don't feel like, as it being a public art, that it should be able to be overruling the other committees in the city, whether it be ours or the signage ordinance or all that kind of thing. So we had to view it as a facade, as the architecture. And again, I would disagree. The rendering was brought to us as a concept. We agreed to vote on it because it was asked. And while it's a concept, there, we don't know what the final is and how the rhythms might change, how the colors might change, how some of the materials might change. So while it was stated earlier that it would be fine to vote on it, even though it's a concept and not final, we would disagree with that. There wasn't a lot of information. As it's come to light later, it's a concept, but we elected to vote on it anyway. So that's kind of the history of what happened with the Historical Commission and why we voted six to one against it. Steve, do you want to make a few comments? I'll just keep my comments brief.
Thank you, Chris.
My name's Stephen Funk. I'm also a member of the Historical Commission, and I was the member who made the motion to deny approval of the application. I'd like to speak also to Mr. Cream's suggestion that our recommendation was invalid because we failed to specifically cite the failures of the application to meet the standards. I'd like to read from the ordinance that states, "Applications for building permits to authorize construction shall be accompanied by information required by the city or Historical Commission, which may include, but not be limited to, the following: scaled dimensions, drawings with appropriate notes indicating conformity with the design standards listed below in subsection D, and reasons for any deviations from design standards listed in subsection D." The ordinance requires that the applicant list how it complies with the standards and where it does not comply with the standards. The ordinance does not say that the Historical Commission, in its review, has to specifically state where it fails to comply with the standards. In their presentation, they completely ignored the design standards. They didn't mention them at all. So I would say their application was incomplete by not citing the design standards. As Chris said, in May, we were given a preliminary design that we felt did comply with the standards. It was received positively, and we were expecting to see that design when it came before the Commission for a final vote. We were kind of blindsided when we saw a completely different design that was completely stripped of scale. The original design was, did have floor delineations that gave you a sense of scale, gave you a sense of the size of the building and the floors. It was clad in brick, which was a material that was common to the area. And when the new design was stripped of those, those floor delineations stripped of the brick, it was clad in stucco instead, again, removing the sense of scale, the kind of, there was a folded screen originally, which was flattened out with these colored pipes, again, removing the sense of scale. And there was one more thing. I can't remember what the other, I don't remember what the other thing was. But, you know, and at the September meeting, we tried to make some recommend, you know, we brought these things up, you know, that, you know, we were concerned that we had this original design that did conform with the standards, and we were presented with this new design that didn't conform with the standards. And we even gave them the option of presenting the old design. And the applicant wavered somewhat, you know, and which is one of the reasons why we tabled the application rather than denying it outright in September. There was some chance that we thought they might come back with the original design. We told them that we would have approved that design. We were subsequently told shortly before the October meeting that they weren't going to change anything and that we were supposed to review or make our recommendations on this new public art piece. And as Chris stated again, that, you know, because of the statements made by Ms. Davis in an interview in the newspaper shortly before the October meeting, that this was a conceptual design, that the artist had been hired just for a preliminary design, and that once this concept was approved, they would be brought in for a final design. We had no choice but to recommend denial because how can the Historical Commission, which is tasked with recommending approval of a design for appropriateness, how can we make a recommendation for appropriateness if, in her own words, it was a concept? We really had no choice but to recommend denial of the application. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Funk. Anybody else from the Historical Commission to make, I don't know, sort of primary remarks? Great.
I'm honored to be here. Eric Berman is my name. I am the resident member of the Historical Commission. I just have a couple of concepts, the way this was presented. And I agree wholeheartedly with Joanne Davis that everyone's taste in art is different. We're all different. I think everyone here is well-intentioned, and I say that sincerely. The problem I had, the way it was presented, we have a wealth of talent in central PA that is incredible. And my understanding, as I took it, they were bypassed. This national search, and you end up with two artists in Miami with this concept. One of our commission members said, "This is all well and good in Miami, but I don't think it plays in Lancaster. It is so far a field." But the final comment that I will make, if you go online and look at R&amp;R and their website, we paid $15,000 to submit this art suggestion. And they went to a file cabinet, they pulled out the exact proposed art for Lancaster that was done for the airport in Providence, Rhode Island. And I have no problem with Providence, Rhode Island, and these colors, but I don't think it's appropriate for Lancaster. So the final thing is, can it be changed? What if we have to paint a different color? Oh, no. This has been copyrighted, and nothing can ever be changed. So I guess I'm saying, I have a problem with it. And I'm going to say something that's kind of near and dear to my heart. I think the two most frightening words in the English language are destination wedding. The second two that are frightening is, "Trust me." And so we are being asked to vote on something that is essentially saying, "Trust us, we're going to do the right thing in the end." And I think this needs to be finely honed and the concepts agreed upon, and then we move forward on a vote. Nobody has a problem with the garage or the library, but we do have some concern about the art. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Berman. Okay, so I will now make both the parties here available to questions from the committee first, Mr.'s Gropera and Soto, and then the larger council before turning it over to public comment. And I'll start, if my colleagues will allow me that privilege. From the, I'm not sure how to agglutinate or conglomerate the first row as a group, but to the front row here, I think a legitimate question has been raised and one that I think determines how interactions between bodies in the city will go forward. How is it that we expect the Historical Commission to rule on a concept when they do not, in fact, know what the final design will be? And I guess as a secondary question, I'm interested in their legal capacity, in their legal capacity to do so, and what the, because I think that certainly the argument's being made that there is an advantage to that. What is the advantage of having the Historical Commission rule in such a way or on such a I just think that's probably, I'll editorialize a little bit. The art does not bother me so much. I think any colors are fine for Lancaster. I think that people from Miami are fine for Lancaster because people in Lancaster come from all over everywhere, as far afield as Puerto Rico and Somalia. But I do think that there is a compelling process question to be answered here, which is why I started with that one.
If I could.
Please, ma'am.
Because this is something that I'm struggling with as well, and this is part of the lessons that we're gleaning as we go through this process. And to underscore that, I think we can all agree that we're not going to agree on what the concept, like, the final design is and what that looks like. I think that there are a lot of questions that I have about process. I mean, here you have two bodies who have independent charges and where the twain will never meet. And so I'm looking at this as like, okay, so what can we be doing differently such that the Historical Commission can do their job of having a final design while also honoring and recognizing that as an artist, bringing work forward to a commission and having their artwork subjected to a body, doesn't matter what body it is, that we don't like this and you should change this, this, and this, is not to the keeping of the integrity of what art is. And so we have this tension that exists between these two bodies, and we have to figure that out. And I'm not sure we're going to figure it out tonight, but that's part of what I'm really interested from this conversation, is how do we do this better? If we want public art in our community and we want to honor our history as well as the diversity and the spirit and the stories of what Lancaster is, and the story of Barney Yule, whose plaza we have named, then how do we do this in a better way? And so I don't think we're going to get to an answer, and I don't know if anybody from the front row is going to stand up, but I'm looking for that because I want to carry the conversation forward in such a way that acknowledges that tension but also provides a pathway through it because right now, there isn't a pathway.
May I respond to that? I don't think there had to be a tension. Please, Mr. Funk, thank you.
I don't think there had to be a tension. I think the problem is, is that given the description of the art piece and the presentation that was given by the Public Arts Commission was that the artists were not given the Historical Commission's or the Historic Heritage Conservation District's design standards, so they didn't design to it. I think it was possible to design a unique art piece that also complied with the design standards, but that was not their design brief, and that's where we have the tension. If they had tried to meet our design standards and create a piece of art, we may not have this problem at all. We might not have this conflict. But it seems obvious from their description and the fact that, as Mr. Berman said, they seem to just pull the design out of a drawer and slap it on this building from, you know, designed from another, from another city, that there was no, there was no thought about the appropriateness for downtown Lancaster.
Thank you, Mr. Funk. John McGRan.
Is that, I mean, I didn't.
It is, all right.
All right. So, and so my name's John McGRan. I serve on the Public Art Advisory Board. And I think, Mayor Sarachi, your question is exactly what the challenge is. And, you know, from my observation, I mean, I will tell you, as a member of the Public Art Advisory Board, I am more excited about serving on that board now than I've ever been. I'm extremely grateful that we have somebody as passionate and talented as Joe Davis to work with us. And I would say that our board is coming to the table and doing our work well and with integrity and with passion, and we're not trying to create an issue or a problem. We're just doing our job. At the same time, I would say that, you know, just, you know, when I think about the Historical Commission and your duty, I'd say you're doing the same thing. You have an assignment, you're doing that with, you know, integrity and diligence. I think the gap is that, you know, in this instance, maybe, I don't, I can see the point that you just made, but I think there's just a gap between what we brought to the table that is unlikely, maybe was always unlikely to meet your standards. Your job, I think, is to advise city council. You know, city council shouldn't be obligated to fall squarely in line with your opinion, but they should take your advice seriously, which I think they're doing. We have a job, which is to advance public art in our community, which we take seriously. As Joe talked about in, or Joe or Chris, I can't remember, but, you know, I mean, you know, we developed a 10-year plan. There were two priorities in that 10-year plan, three actually, that I would, I mean, I know we only talked about two, but, you know, Lancaster, we identified Lancaster Square as an important place, a place that we had an important opportunity to advance public art. It's been a dream of this board to see art integrated in design. This presented our first opportunity to do that. And quite honestly, I think the other, there's one that we didn't talk about, but there is a whole thing of transforming eyesores into assets. I think, you know, that was not really part of the presentation, but that's an important part of our 10-year plan, and we are achieving that on this 100 block of North Queen. So I think, you know, it's not an enviable spot for city council to be in because I think you're going to have to sift through it. But I think, I think that's what I see, is a lot of really, I mean, I can, you know, we're all coming to our job on the board, you know, doing what we believe to be the right thing. You know, I don't, I hope that nobody here, you know, sees it differently than that. And what I would say is, you know, I do feel like I have to address to some point, Mr. Berman's comment. I understand why you would make the comment that you did about, you know, the art from Rhode Island and just, you know, slapped on it. I don't see it that way. I mean, I think it's too, this is the style that this team of artists has cultivated over their career. Artists work in a style, and, you know, this reflects their style. I think there's a, we know that there's a commitment to be receptive to input from our community and evolve the design so that it's more reflective of what the people in this community say they want, you know. But, you know, I don't think that, I don't consider that a fair criticism of where we are. It's, it reflects their work to date, it depicts the kind of style that they work in and how it might, you know, turn out on this project.
Thank you, Mr. McGRan. I'll, John, Pete.
Thank you. I, I'm not going to speak on the art itself because I think the art gene kind of skipped me and went to my other family members. What I, what I would like to get clear in my mind is the timeline, I guess. When this proposal or application went before the Historical Commission, it was a design concept, and that's why they voted it down. concept, and that's why they voted it down. But now I understand it's a done deal. It's the final version. Is that correct? It's not.
This is still the design concept.
Could you please use the microphone? Thank you.
So, members of the board, members of council, I've been doing this for 40 years, so I'm used to the attitude that the lawyers can't add value to a discussion. I'm just going to talk through that. The mayor has asked about process. Lawyers are the process people. Yes, it is unfortunate, but we are frequently in the position of figuring out the process standing on our two feet in front of the decision makers. The process question is an existential question. What is the proper role of the Historical Commission? What is the proper role of the Public Arts Advisory Board? And unfortunately, council has to decide that. The important thing to consider is, as the applicant, the parking authority is entitled to objective standards to which it must hew. Even tonight, the Chair of the Historical Commission says that this proposal falls short for obvious reasons. He might as well have said, "Well, you know," and sat down. If this were a whitewashed facade, we would be focusing on, Mr. Grupera, what is certain? What is certain is that there's going to be a glass-encased structure that are the stairs and the elevators, and a facade that is composed of a series of vertical tubes. No color, no message, no image. That's what's certain. What is still conceptual and in discussion is what the colors are going to be, the image is going to be, the message is going to be, not unlike those murals painted on the brick wall of Water Street Rescue Mission. One member of the Historical Commission opined that if we came in with a whitewashed structure and later proposed art to go onto it, the Historical Commission would have no role in the process. So the process is being developed in this first time ever, perhaps one-off situation, where the art is an integral part of the architecture. But as it compares to the Hotel Lancaster, now Holiday Inn, as it compares to 101 North Queen, what are the rhythms? What are the patterns? What are the materials and textures? What are the architectural details with which this design is to be judged? The Historical Commission has added nothing to that tonight by saying, "Well, it's obvious." I don't think it's obvious. And if you can't conform to what the streetscape is, my opinion, which I guess is as good as anybody's, is go big. Because isn't that what 101 North Queen did? To what does that conform? But it's a great building because they went big. Nothing historical, nothing that's continued. The materials are different. It's a great building.
Thank you. Is that the impression the members of the Historical Commission have that this is still in the design concept? Because I could have sworn I heard their opinions were that this was the final product.
I think that question needs to be, Joanne Davis.
Right, but Joanne has already answered that question to her opinion. I think Mr. Grupera is asking what understanding you had when you came to your recommendation.
Well, I think Mr. Cream and Ms. Davis are saying two different things. He's saying it's complete, and she's saying it's not. And, you know, the position of the Historical Commission, Mr. Cream is saying that, "Well, we haven't decided on the color, we haven't decided on the message." That's immaterial. That is material, color, if it's integral to the material of the building material, it's reviewed. We review that. If it comes from the factory, that color, if it's installed on the building with the color already applied, we review it. We require every other applicant to provide samples of materials. It's unfair to those applicants to be, to have to bring those things when these, when this applicant is saying, "It doesn't matter, we don't have to bring those materials, we don't have to decide what the color is."
And this is the inherent tension in the process between the Public Art Advisory Board and the Historic Commission, is what is final, what is not final? You ask, Counselor, if this was the final design. From the Public Art Advisory Board, you're hearing that it is not the final design, that the colors, the words, the message is not final because the artist has not actually come here to engage in a public, the public process of defining that. And it is reasonable and legitimate for the Historical Commission to want to see all the final, like what the colors, what the message, whatever. And so it is not surprising in some ways that we are here. Do I wish that we could have predicted this and done a better job in the process of working through this in conjunction between the Historical Commission and the Public Art Advisory Board? A resounding yes. And I think that this is an opportunity for us to learn something out of this in the event that there should ever be another person who would like to engage in this process with the Public Art Advisory Board and the Historic Commission, and an artist who would be willing to also engage in this process, recognizing that there is going to be an unknown at the end of it because there will not be a public body, and this is the hardest part, that ultimately decides on what the art looks like. Because to do so is to say to an artist that your art is subject, you know, yes, we give them, with Mr. Funk's recommendations, the Historic Design Guidance, yes, we give them the name of the park, yes, we give them a sense of the history and the story of the city of Lancaster, yes, we give them a timeline, yes, we give them a budget. These are all the things that we do related to public art in terms of laying out a process. But at the end of the day, that art is determined by the artist themselves. And I don't know of an artist that would say, "I'm going to come to you with these concepts, I'm going to present this concept, and then I'm going to have two advisory bodies determine whether, what colors." I mean, it's like creating art by committee. I don't know of an artist that would do that. And this is the kind of conversation that I want, that I'm excited that we're having, and it's the question that I'm left with in this process, is how do we do this better?
Understood.
Mr. Soto, please. Yes, Mr. Berman?
Could this woman turn her cellphone and call? Please, thank you.
Counselor Soto.
Yeah. I also share Mr. Grupera's comment on, "Art skipped me." Didn't skip my kids, but it did skip me. But I just want clarification. Now, three years ago, I was up in Pittsburgh on a musical conference, and we did a tour of that city where we saw plenty of demonstrations and exhibits of public art. And not one that I find offensive or with lack of taste, or something with the turn of a person's eye with no background in art away. And I don't see how that cannot be accomplished here in this city. But the question I'm focusing on here is the comment of complete or material. Now, is it your objection that the tubing that is going to be the base of this artwork, if I'm understanding correctly, is the objection?
Well, I mean, the recommendation for denial has two parts.
Excuse me, I'm sorry to interrupt. Can I just ask a favor? If we're going to comment, we have to talk into the microphone because the counselor's listening on there. Yes.
Yeah.
Apologies, sorry to interrupt you.
The recommendation for denial was two parts. One was that, the second part was that the, that it was incomplete, that the design was conceptual and that it wasn't, as Ms. Davis said in the newspaper interview, that it was intended to evolve once the R&amp;R Studios was hired to complete the design. That was the second part of the denial. The first part of the recommendation was that it didn't meet the design standards, and that had to do with the materials and the rhythms and patterns of the neighborhood. And I'm sorry if Mr. Cream doesn't think those are obvious, but those things are written in the ordinance.
Hold on, hold on a second. Hold on, Mr. Cream. Counselor Soto, may I just a second?
Please.
Mr. Funk, I think, so I am not, I consider myself in a number of ways an artist. I am not an architect. Can you, for my benefit, elaborate, and I think for the rooms, what those rhythms and patterns are? Not, not, I don't mean that as a gotcha, I would just like a better understanding.
Okay, well, if I may, I mean, I brought with me, I have an 11 by 17 image, I don't, I didn't, I don't know if I can project it up onto the.
Yeah, and Bernie, can.
You can project it.
Do you have a, yeah, we have a dot cam.
Two, can I?
Here, I will come get that from you.
Okay.
And, yeah, the button's on the back if you want.
Two.
This is the one you want?
Yeah, that, that's the, yeah.
There you go. I know, this is poorly staged, man. I'm sorry.
That's the original design that we saw in May. You can see, and that complies with the design standards with materials. You can see that the original stair tower is clad in brick to coordinate with the brick of the Holiday Inn, with, also with the aluminum storefront in the stair tower. You can also see, as I had mentioned earlier, there are projecting sunscreens or sunshades at floor levels which accentuate the floor levels of the building to give you a sense of scale, to give you the sense that this is a, it's a six-level parking garage, but it's in effect a 10-story building, so it gives you a sense of the scale of the building. And the screen that's shown over the surface of the garage is kind of a folded screen, which again gives you texture. It's not just a flat, a flat surface. Now, do you have the image of the, of the new design? I can.
Bernie will come grab it. Bernie, could you? Thank you.
By comparison, the brick has been turned to, has been changed to stucco, and in the narrative of this, this design, we were told that it was changed to stucco to save money. The sunshades were deleted to save money. We now have just yellow glass for, you know, 10 stories high, which eliminates any sense of scale. You don't know how tall that is. The surface of the garage has been completely flattened out, you know, it's multicolored candy stripes, but now it's completely flat. Again, we lose all sense of scale. You know, you look at those, the lettering, this is "All the world's a stage," which we couldn't figure out how that was relevant to Lancaster Square, Yule Plaza. But, you know, how tall are those letters? You know, what is the scale of that? You know, those are the kinds of things that we took issue with, with this new design, where we felt it was lacking in comparison to the original design that we saw in May. Those are the things that we, that we took issue with. And where the original design, we felt, met all of the design standards and where this building, where this design did not.
Thank you. I interrupted you, Counselor Soto, please continue.
But, but all that said, my question has not been answered. Material is material, concepts are concepts. Is the piping the issue? Is that what I'm hearing?
It's all of those things. It's the fact that the piping has, sorry.
You know, it's all of those things that I've, you know, the stair tower has changed, the material of the stair tower was changed, the yellow glass was an issue. Time and time again, in reviews of applications before the Historical Commission, the Historic Preservation Specialist emphasizes that they don't want reflective glass, they don't want tinted glass, because that's not a common material in historic downtown Lancaster. It should be clear glass. This amber glass is just odd. You know, it's, there's no precedent for it anywhere in downtown Lancaster. And I object to Mr. Cream's statement that because there's no historic buildings in Lancaster Square, that we should just ignore the standards altogether. There should just be a free-for-all. We could build anything we want because there are no historic buildings. I think the standards still apply. You know, we don't have a historic building, so the Secretary of Interior Standards for Rehabilitation of Historic Buildings don't apply, but we still have design standards that apply throughout the Heritage Conservation District. It's not a free-for-all. So it's a lot of, it's a lot of things. It's not just the pipes. It's all of, all of it.
But it is public art.
It's a, but it's, but it's a, but it's a building.
It's public art on the building.
On a building, but it's a building.
In an area that lost its historicness many years ago when they tore everything down.
Right, but it's still part, it's still part of a city that has design standards. And all of the other buildings in the city have to comply with those standards. Just because this is art doesn't mean it gets a free pass.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I had.
Thank you, Mr. Funk. Well, me, Pete, and John have thoroughly exhausted ourselves, so bear with us. We'll open it up to the other members of council, councilors. Going once.
Can I make a comment?
There we go. Yes, Counselor Diaz.
Is it too noisy?
No, you're all right. Just proceed, you're good.
My question is, has anyone really reached out to the community that have input because our constituents that live in Lancaster City should have the right to speak? And I think if I'm not mistaken, 68% were objecting to the type of art. I feel that it's not an objection in having art, it's probably the objection of the fact that it's not showing what Lancaster City, Lancaster County really represents.
Is that all, Counselor Diaz?
I hope you heard that.
We did. Is there, so the first part of, thank you for your comment, the first part of that was a question. Would you, I can probably have some member of the front row sitting up here, which you cannot see, address the question about public outreach in a little more specificity for you, if you would like that. Would you like that, Counselor Diaz?
Sure, very brief because I know it's been pretty long.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, so this is John McGRan again. I mean, I think the quick answer to that is, that's the process that begins now. I mean, we, you know, when we engage an artist, our expectation is that they come to our community, that they participate in numerous public meetings, solicit public input, gain input and feedback from the community so that their art can evolve to reflect what they hear, what they learn when they come to visit, so that it becomes a better reflection of what they've learned about our community when they come. So to your question, Councilwoman Diaz. So, to your question, Councilwoman Diaz, that's the process that begins when city council votes to approve this. Ms. Davis, would you clarify, is that good?
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Diaz. Councilwoman, Counselor Craig?
I do have a question.
Yes, please.
Let me get this one. Is this one?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I tend to agree with Counselor Diaz, but I want to know, like you said, John, that the process begins for the constituents after the decision is made. I think it's a decision that, I mean, I think it's a, a process that probably should have been done a little earlier on, because if our constituents were involved from the beginning, we may not even be here.
So I'll, I'll speak to the, so, and again, please, Joe, clarify if I misstate anything, but what I would say to that is, you know, this is national best practice. With many of the public art projects that have already been installed throughout our city, that the process that we're describing is the way they typically go. You know, we engage an artist, you know, they're selected by a committee, and then there's a process that gets undertaken to gain community input, to enhance, to refine, enhance whatever word you want to apply, their design. I mean, I think this project has definitely gotten much more attention and much more feedback at this stage than most of the projects we've done. And I would say, you know, from my standpoint, I think that's exciting and great. I think, you know, the best thing for us would be to have robust community participation in the process, so that we get a finished product that best reflects our community. I think it also gets back to Mayor Sarachi's, you know, comment, which is, what we, what we should not want is art that gets, that comes to a vote. You know, if, if, if we're, if we bring something to you and, and the seven of you are thumbs up or thumbs down, whether you just plain old like the art, we're, we're not fulfilling, you know, our thing as, as an art, as a, as a city with a strong focus on public art and art in general.
Well, didn't...
And just, sorry.
Weren't there several concepts presented?
Uh, yeah, there were three.
And who were they presented to?
A selection committee that was comprised by the Public Art Advisory Board. And, and Councilwoman Craig, just to answer your question, there was, and, and Ms. Diaz, there was a tremendous amount of outreach to the community at the beginning of this process, which was when we started planning for Yule Plaza, to, to find out what people were looking for. And we, we found out that there was, there was a want for public art in a big way in the plaza. And from there, that's when we, the Public Art Advisory Board assembled a selection committee and moved forward, just the way that we do with all other public art projects, to select the artists. So that, we're moving in that direction, just, it's, it's the way that it generally operates.
Okay. Were there any, of the Yule family that were involved on the panel to discuss what was going to happen?
No, and that's because this happened before the, the plaza was named after Barney Yule.
Ms. Davis, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Guys, can we, can we all just collectively silence our cell phones? Can we all just take a moment right now? This is the start of the movie. Please, thank you.
And I will say that, once the plaza was named after Barney Yule, there internally has been tremendous discussion of, and excitement for ways that his legacy can be incorporated into the public artwork. It's absolutely a consideration, and if, if it had been named before, they would have been included in the, in the selection committee.
So, in, in receiving the concept for what's supposed to be incorporated into this building, could we not have something a little more concrete than a conception?
So, I'm not sure exactly what you're asking, as far as when, when you...
Well, as, as far as the artists are concerned, since I, I remember hearing somebody said they haven't been here to engage in the community, but they have all the background about the community thus far. And the, the concept that we're looking at, is that the only concept there was, or were there more renderings of concepts?
There were three, so they did come and visit, and they, they did come visit the community, and they presented three concepts. There was one that was narrowed down to one by the selection committee, which is, is generally how these projects operate. It's, it's standard for, for public art process nationally. These are, we follow national standards and best practices.
Last question, I think. How many people were on the committee?
Seven, I believe.
Okay.
So, Counselor Craig?
Thank you. That's it.
Thank you.
May I ask one more question?
You may, Counselor Diaz.
Was there any thought in all the artists that we have in Lancaster County or Pennsylvania, that we reached out to someone that's in our community instead of reaching out to someone that's all the way down to Miami?
Yeah, that's a really great question, and I know it's something that the community is really concerned about. Absolutely, absolutely. We consider, we always consider local artists and Lancaster artists with every project, and, and it's at the forefront of our minds all the time, is, is how we can get more work to Lancaster artists. Absolutely.
And can, can you name who you actually reached out to?
Um, so, no, I'm, just let me finish. We did not reach out to any Lancaster artists for this project, but when we first started thinking of it, of course, we always think of the best way to go about the artist selection. And in the, because this project is so high-profile, has a big budget, and is new, we really needed to make sure we were, we were hiring an artist that had done this exact type of artwork before. So, in other words, artists that could show a vast variety of projects that were extremely similar in that integrating their, their artwork on the facade of a building. And so we did a national search to find artists that were very, very highly ranked in that. And, and so, absolutely, if, if there was anybody from Lancaster that had shown up, they certainly would have been invited.
So you're saying that if there was, so you're saying that we do not have any in Lancaster?
We have a tremendous amount of talent in Lancaster, absolutely. But we did not find any artists in Lancaster that had multiple projects under their belt in their portfolio, showing that they, with successful projects of integrating public art into the facade of a building.
And no one in Pennsylvania, let's put it this way?
No, some, there was a candidate from Pennsylvania, I believe.
So one candidate in Pennsylvania?
Yeah, I don't totally recall. I'd have to get back to you exactly, but I believe one was from Pennsylvania.
And in reference to the funding, this is funding from Pennsylvania, correct?
Um, the, the funding for the, the entire project, the funding, yes.
Correct.
The Parking Authority, yeah.
So we're taking constituents' taxpayer money, Pennsylvania money, and we're going to pay someone that's not even from Pennsylvania. Is that correct?
Um, I, I need, I'm not sure if I can best answer that question. It's coming from the Parking Authority, which I don't believe is, is taxpayer money. The Chris, it's the Chris Authority funds.
Which is still funded by Pennsylvania, correct?
Guys...
So money gets borrowed by Pennsylvania?
Yeah, Counselor Diaz, hold on a second. Guys, I need like one or two people talking at a time.
Speak, speak into the mic.
Please continue, Counselor Diaz.
So the question is, the funding, whether it's borrowed or not, whether it's taxpayers or not, is coming from Pennsylvania, is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
I have a follow-up.
That's all I had.
Can I, can I just, I'd like, if I'd like to add one comment, just to the original question that Councilwoman Diaz was asking, which was, you know, about the qualifications of our local artists for projects like this. When I, I've been on the board for four years now, and, and honestly, that was the first question that I asked. At that time, we had recently completed the, the installation at the train station, that Silent Symphony with the wind sculptures. And I think there were a lot of similar comments about that, that, you know, why did we, why did we bring an artist from out of the community to, to do this installation? I asked that question. And, and, and again, it's a hard answer, I think, sometimes to accept when, when you're told that you may not have the qualifications in our community for the needs of a specific project. You know, I think what I would say is, you know, one of the things that we've committed to, and I think this has gotten better with, with Joe as our public art director, is when we, when we bring artists from out of the area to Lancaster, you know, we include in that process something, you know, a workshop or a, a, some, some opportunity for our local art community to learn and gain experience from these national artists, so that we can strive for a day where we don't have to look outside of our community as often. But there are some situations where the, the needs, the, I mean, we still, we still have a duty, you know, with taxpayer dollars to make sure that we're investing them with somebody in a project that's going to be durable, permanent, this, I mean, this is, this is attached to a building. It, it needs to perform for the life of the building. So, you know, we need to know that there's a portfolio of work and, and experience that we can rely on, and I think that was a, a major deciding factor in this instance.
I can accept that, and I respect that, but it's just surprising that in Pennsylvania, we do not have an artist that can perform that particular artwork.
Thank you, Counselor Diaz. Counselor Soto?
The commoners' payment was made, that there was three candidates, am I correct?
No, there were three.
The selection committee reviewed five candidates and narrowed it down to three finalists that they interviewed.
And those finalists, at that time, the concept that we have on the table now, the finalists that have...
That's all I have, Counselor Ishmael.
So they, they interviewed three people and selected Roberto Rosario from R and R Studios. To, they, R and R was the ones who presented three concepts.
Oh, so they presented three concepts, and the final one that you are proposing, or that was proposed to, or ended up in the drawing, that was a choice that was made by Bill?
The selection committee.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Smith-Waddell, if I may?
Counselor Ballantyne?
Couple of questions. The first one, there's a lot of discussion about there not being any historical relevance in this area. If that is the case, why was it presented to the commission? Just out of curiosity.
Because they have, I mean, they can speak to their specific authority for design standards within the Heritage Conservation District, and in fact, I'll have one of them do that briefly, if you would be so kind.
We are required to review all new construction within the Heritage Conservation District, and, and all new construction is required to comply with the standards. It's simple as that.
Okay, thanks. Second question, were the changes in the materials from the brick to the stucco between Design 1 and Design 2, were they made specifically just for cost-reductive purposes?
I believe that was the explanation, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
One more quick one, please.
Counselor Grupera?
Looking at the rendering, how much of that rendering is a final design? How much of that is the permanent structure? And what is still up for consideration?
So, moving forward, the artists are going to be really starting a new design because they, they're given a budget after this concept was submitted. So it's going to look different, but the materials will stay the same, and the way that it's attached to the building, the, the structure.
The tubes and the glass siding. So all you're really changing is the color, the verbiage?
I really can't speak to that until they start that process.
Good.
Thank you, Joe. So I'll take this, this moment to say, in either direction, uh, yeah, I have a BFA. I was a working artist for a number of years in both plastic arts and theater art. I also have a deep passion for the historical character of my city. A thing that doesn't super jibe for me, if I may editorialize, I think a number of the criticisms here are legitimate, but I don't really think that there's a space for artistic nativism. Some of the best work I've done in Lancaster and in Pittsburgh, where I did my undergraduate work, was in conjunction with artists from Japan, Belize, California, China. There are some legitimate objections here, and they're extremely legitimate, but this idea that people from elsewhere can't contribute validly to our community is the opposite of what Lancaster is about. Now, there are very legitimate questions about how the community was engaged, how this process works, and what the ultimate ramifications will be, and what the symbolism is to our community, but I will just say that for myself, oh, these people are, are from Miami, does not make a particularly deep impression on me. But that's just me, and I happen to be in front of the microphone at the moment. On that subject, all right, here we go. So like I said, three minutes maximum, I will be timing you, unfortunately. I will also ask that you not, there's the microphone, that we endeavor to make our statements as specific and clear as possible, and if it is at all possible, to avoid simply repeating what the person before you said, whether you are pro or con. I want to hear the diversity and the strength of your viewpoints, but an emphasis on diversity and strength. Before, before I start, Mayor, did I see a hand?
If you would just indulge me for one question.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry. I, one question that I have is, and I believe this was answered in a memo that was sent to city council, but I just want to clarify in my mind. If the city council votes to accept the Historical Commission's recommendations, is it my understanding from LPA that, given the construction timeline that you're on, that there will be no art in this project, and we will revert to what?
Mayor, we are, we haven't, we're comfortable reverting back to the original design?
Does that include the word thing that is included there? Because I'm not...
When you, when you say the word thing...
There's, there's a, I can't remember what the, what is that called?
There is a word cloud.
A word cloud. A word cloud, which is often, which is a, it's, it's a, I understood as a placeholder for something, maybe that's not, but if it's a word cloud, then I want to know if that's going to stay or go. Who selects the words that go into the word cloud? How does that word cloud come to be? Word clouds are part and parcel of many PowerPoint presentations that I've seen over the years. I'm looking at people nodding their heads that they too have seen these. So I just, and, and Mr. Vdok is here, maybe you can answer that question as the architect. I just want to be clear, I want council members to be clear, like, what's the replacement? If this goes, what's, what will be there instead?
Chris wants to answer this? Oh.
Okay, so it's a big, it's an unknown at this point, what, what, what that would be.
With the insertion of the public art in this process, the other concepts...
Thank you very much, Mr. Vdok. That's helpful.
And, if I may, I mean, the Historical Commission made it clear at the September meeting...
See, going up.
We made it clear at the September meeting that we would recommend approval of that May design. We, we had no, we had no issues with that design.
With the word cloud.
With the word cloud and the, the original design that they presented as a conceptual design in May.
So I, I'm struggling because the word cloud, it, it means that the words are coming from somewhere. Where are those words coming from?
I think we anticipated public input for the word cloud.
So the facade would be approved with an unknown image by the Historical Commission because it got, it attended to the rhythms and so on?
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
And it had, it had to do with the scale, too.
The scale and the rhythms.
It wasn't...
It wasn't, the words weren't the focus of the design. I had to work with this.
But my best understanding, and it's been a while, was that would have public input as far as what words would be there. Ted can confirm that.
Mr. Vdok, could you please? Thank you.
Couldn't hide forever, Ted.
Something like this, I can grab the, the one from over there.
I mean, I think, I think to, to the point that Larry's getting to and to Mr. Funk's point, you know, when this was presented to the commission in May, it was presented as a concept design. So, to, to the, the points that have been made by several of the board members, that was what was presented. It was a concept, it was presented at high level for general discussion. The intent for whatever design is coming back to the commission from an architectural perspective would have been the development of this concept or another concept. So, the question of what are the words? Are there still words on there? I mean, there was internal debate even amongst the Parking Authority about whether they felt that, that words were appropriate on the facade or not, even in this concept. So, so to your point, are these the words? What are the words? I don't know the answer to the question because this was presented as a concept to the Historical Commission, and it was never developed to the form where it was ready for a final submission to the, to the Historical Commission.
Mr. Vdok, stay right there. So, you never received, the Historical Commission never received this as a final design, which they were asked to give a recommendation on, is that correct?
Right.
Okay, thank you. You might still want to stay right there, Mr. Vdok, but go ahead, Larry.
I'm fine.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. You may return to your seat, Mr. Vdok, thank you. Sir? Wait, hold on, just before we, going once, going twice. Thank you. Okay.
I'm Jerome Hershey, I'm an artist. I wasn't going to speak tonight, but in terms of process.
How can he have the microphones off?
Bernie, can we?
How do you turn it on?
It may happen over here.
Is it on now?
No.
Is it on now?
No. Can we use the point?
Yeah, just grab him the, thank you. Bring the whole stand. If you push the button in the bottom of the, if you depress the bot, yep.
Thanks, Larry.
It should.
Can you hear me now? So, I'm Jerome Hershey, I'm an artist. And speaking to a process and best practices, when I am invited to consider a commission, I come up with a concept, and then I do at least one or two finished, let's call them studies. And those studies are then approved or not approved, and then I move forward. And in my case, in my best practices, I make two finished paintings, from which I let the folks choose. Thank you.
So, you don't have to raise your hands, you can just proceed to the microphone, you can form an orderly line. If it gets too rowdy out there, I'll break the fight up, but.
Hi, my name is Steph.
No, the microphone.
My name is Stephanie McNulty, and I came to this meeting as a consumer of public art. One of the things I've noticed in the past few years is that we've gotten so many beautiful pieces. And the piece, and I've been reading a lot about this project, and I've read the, in the paper, but also in the website of the public art, the city's public art website. And one of the things I wanted to highlight that I haven't heard enough about is, gets to Councilwoman Craig's point, is that it's so important that the next phase happens because, the way I understand it, from all of the literature I've seen, is that it's going to be a very open process with a lot of public input. And I, as a consumer, a relative newcomer to Lancaster, I've been here 12 years, am super excited about that part. So, I always encourage you all to find a way to move forward so then the community really can get engaged in this process. I think that's what a lot of us are looking forward to.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. McNulty. And give me just a second. We are empowered to add, I mean, a wide variety of additional stipulations to our decision. Would we be, is there a relevance issue that might be contested if theoretically we said, we'll approve this on the condition that you engage in the following strictly delineated process, since Dr. McNulty just specifically mentioned that opened process and the danger of the two-word phrase, "trust me," was raised? Is that, somebody who's been doing this longer than I have, does that seem within our ken?
Obviously, it is. I just wanted to make everyone cognizant of timing for the project. We're in the midst of demolition right now, which will be completed by February. We're probably due to the art process, three to six months behind what was originally planned for this project, so obviously that, that is a good contingent, but we just need to be cognizant of timing.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Cohen. Ann.
My name is Ann Winslow, and I'm the co-coordinator of the Lancaster Healthcare Rights Committee of Put People First PA, and I'm a leader in the Poor People's Campaign, a call, a national call for more revival. Despite Lancaster being advertised as a welcoming city, as well as being recognized for accepting the highest amount of refugees per capita in the country, it often fails the poorest of the refugees and the rest of its most vulnerable residents, the poor and the dispossessed. Although I've done everything right, I earned a bachelor's degree in human growth and development with a concentration in early childhood education, and I was working on my master's degree in divinity. I've been out of work since June and homeless since the beginning of May. If it weren't for Tammy and Matt opening their home, I would have lost my two emotional support cats, and I would probably be sleeping in the streets.
Ann, this is, this is Jermaine.
I'm, I'm getting to it.
Thank you.
Since beginning to partner with Food Not Bombs on Saturdays, one of whose founding members is also a member of the National Union of the Homeless, I've been acutely aware of how unwelcoming the city has become, especially towards the homeless. Our concern that both ours and others' efforts to feed and clothe the poor in public areas such as Ben's Park will be criminalized. We have had the police ride their bikes within close proximity of our table and have seen both the police and ambassadors making their presence known for extended periods of time. Many of our residents, regardless of their economic status, are trauma survivors, and this presence often causes them to be triggered. Many of the poor and homeless who have also had negative interactions with the police have the effects of trauma magnified due to their presence, me being one of them. A big concern for me, as well as others here that have come with me from the community, is that the poor and the dispossessed, which also includes the homeless, will not be welcomed in the library or Yules Plaza. Our concern stems from the pervasive gentrification that's pushed us out. The location of the library plaza and the luxury condos surrounding the site has us concerned that we won't be welcomed due to the potential of our mere presence upsetting the residents and the patrons. Our concerns stem from our experience in Ben's Park, as it is now before this, before this has even started, as well as those that we learned about when we spoke to them. We're also concerned about the ramifications that removing the bus stops and shelters, not only across from Ben's Park, which is expressly and blatantly absent in the pictures that we've been shown, but other areas of the city. Although this may have been done to discourage the homeless from sleeping in and on them, this has created a great hardship for the disabled and others who rely on public transportation. One of our members, who's disabled and cannot stand for extended periods of time, has expressed great dismay about not only no longer being able to sit down, but that the other shelters, benches, and the stops were moved or discontinued without notice. He was late for student teaching, and others he had talked to were late for work, missed critical doctor's appointments, and caused unnecessary consequences.
Ann, you got to wrap it up.
I am. As a homeless person of color who moved to Lancaster to go to seminary, I have not been on the receiving end of any of the aspects of the welcoming community that Lancaster claims to be and is touted for in the media. The city needs to extend the hospitality that is put on the map for, towards the community that needs it the most. We're more than worth the investment, which should be just as important as the proposed plaza and art.
Thank you very much, Ann.
My name is Casey Flores. I'm coming today as a community member, community leader, an artist, and also a person who has interest in supporting the local business of Lancaster. I'm here in support of this project, mostly in the, the actual act of it moving forward because I really feel like it's going to be the one time we have a chance to voice and be, show our, show our voice as a public within this project. We're going through a lot of changes in the city, there's a lot of growth going on. One of the fears of all of that growth as being a local citizen is going to be gentrification. I think this is an opportunity for the city to kind of make that statement, that we're not going to move forward with just straight allowing gentrification to happen, but instead we're going to work together as a community and as, as, you know, different departments, not just allowing some corporate to come in and slap their name on a building that's in our prominent downtown area, but rather we're going to work together with our community and with the city to have say in all of it. So, I think there's a little bit more to the structure and the process that needs to just kind of be considered. I think it's that chance for us to have that voice as a community in something such as prominent, something in the middle of the downtown area. So, I'm just hoping for the, the sake of that process that we can continue this moving forward without pulling back and going black and white into whatever else it needs to be. We're going to have that public art conversation, which is going to allow us to keep having that conversation and, and joining the community along with the development.
Thank you.
I have a set thing of remarks, I was asked by our folks to give these certain remarks. It's just a statement, okay. So, my name is Tammy Rojas, I'm a member of the Lancaster Healthcare Rights Committee of Put People First PA, and I'm on the coordinating committee of the Pennsylvania Poor People's Campaign and National Call for More Revival. I hereby give the following statement on behalf of the Lancaster Healthcare Rights Committee and the newly-formed Lancaster County Homeless Union. With the poor, we, the poor and dispossessed, have concerns regarding the development happening on the 100th block of North Queen Street, where the library is slated to be relocated and include an art mural. The poor will see this art mural day in and day out, while at the same time we are being scrutinized, criminalized, punished, and pushed out of our own community just because we are poor. We heard many in the community mention their concerns about this project, including Leroy Hopkins, president of the local African-American Historical Society. He called the art inappropriate and voiced concerns of a lack of transparency, and we agree. Not only do we agree with Mr. Hopkins about that, about the art proposal, we are concerned we will not be welcomed at this new fancy library, and worry about the intensifying unfair targeting by local police when we hang out in Ben's Park. We know police target the poor, and we know they typically target people of color even more intensely. Now imagine if you're a person of color and also poor. We may not be able to stop you from relocating the library or placing an art mural on it, thus adding to the beautification and gentrification of the area, which, which is causing mass displacement of the poor in our community. So, we are here tonight to make a plea and ask that the poor get back a portion of what has been stolen from us. The Poor People's Campaign and National Call for More Revival represents the continuation of the great work started by Martin Luther King Jr. before his assassination over 50 years ago. He pushed forward despite death threats and the high percentage of people who left his side when he began to push not just for civil rights, but for human rights for all. In order to obtain the needed transformation to society, MLK believed we must unite the poor of this nation across all lines of division into a new and unsettling force. The leaders in today's Poor People's Campaign and National Call for More Revival have picked up the torch to continue MLK's work and fight for fundamental systemic change in society. The poor represent all lines of division. Instead of staying in silos, we are coming together across all races, genders, ages, abilities, all religious and spiritual beliefs and backgrounds from all across the LGBTQ spectrum. The poor and dispossessed represents us all. When you lift up the poor, you lift up everyone else as well. When you're on the side of the poor and dispossessed, you're on the side of the entire working class of this nation. We are here to ask you all to consider a Poor People's, Poor People's Campaign, a National Call for More Revival, art mural for the new public library. We also ask that we bottom line this project. We assure you, we have the connections and the capacity to do so, and a PPC art mural is something we are already organizing to do. We want to use this project and the funds to uplift the work so many have contributed to, gave their lives for, and continue to do so. We want to use this work to inspire the poor and dispossessed artists in our community who have been oppressed and who have not had the privilege or opportunity to realize their dreams, and to bring people together. We want this work to reflect the pledge that Lancaster can be a model for communities across our country, working to truly welcome and care for all its residents. Lancaster can do this. The poor and dispossessed are here to ask you to please consider our proposal we set forth here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Tammy. David, Paula, somebody?
Can I speak from over there? Turn towards everyone.
Sure.
Yeah. Hi, my name's David Lasky. I'm an artist, I live here. I'm not devoid of talent, but, got one. It actually is really easy for me to believe that there is not an artist in Lancaster who can do architectural design artwork. I think, you know, full disclosure, it's not my favorite work, but, full disclosure, I think the art, like, I don't even know the name of the board. Joe, Ms. Davis, really deserve applause and congratulations for really trying to push us towards something new, to do something very difficult. Trying to make art that is also architectural facade seems like it became the source of a big difficulty, so it's like, that's tough, but I think a worthwhile endeavor. I've had to make some really complicated works in my time, and I know that the more dimensions there are on a piece, the more incredibly difficult it gets. I know that if I had to get a project passed more than seven people, I might say it wasn't worth it. I think exposing public art to a public vote is just as good as saying, no, thank you, we don't want any. To try to make a mural is a different thing. I think there are a lot of other cities that have really successful mural programs, given that that's not really what this is slated to be. This is a piece of architectural facade. I think it's good to focus on the difficulty of how much of this is architecture, how much of it is art, which is, I don't envy you. But I think still, it's a worthwhile piece to consider and a worthwhile effort to make. I will say for that question, is it art or is it architecture? It's, ever since Americans started making art, they've been doing things that were sort of on the border and saying, well, it's art, let it, give us a pass. So, that's a, a part of a larger American art tradition. I have other notes, but that's probably my time.
Thank you, Mr. Lasky. Hey, Paula.
Excuse me, my name is Paula Jackson, I used to work here.
Good to see you, Paula.
And I'm very familiar with the process that we're talking about. I had sent to, I had, thanks to Bernie, had my comments forwarded to the City Council. I'm not going to address many of them because everything has been said pretty much, you know, in the comments in terms of procedure. I am concerned about City Council approving a design when you don't know what the design will be. Little history, the Architectural Heritage Ordinance came about in the late 1990s and adopted in early 2000s. People that served on two advisory committees remembered what happened to Lancaster during urban renewal. Beautiful buildings were demolished on South Duke Street with, you know, not the opportunity for the community to weigh in. Beautiful buildings, historic buildings were destroyed on Queen Street, which is the area we're talking about now, without. were destroyed on Queen Street, which is the area we're talking about now, without a lot of opportunity for a public input. Two advisory committees, one in the late 90s, set forth the procedure. They wanted the city council versus the zoning board. Those are the two options we had. Which board of the city would make the decision about demolition and new construction? The advisory committee said it should be elected officials, so that took us in the path to go. And then the second advisory committee worked on the nuts and bolts of what would be reviewed. So it was a very citizen-based process. So you've heard a lot about procedure, and I just wanna raise some, some questions. Thanks to Tim and providing the website for the architect. I was concerned about nearly an identical piece of work being proposed for Lancaster. It's not just in Rhode Island, very similar in Buenos Aires and in Brussels. So, you know, I was concerned about a building design repeated from elsewhere in the country and the world being imposed on downtown Lancaster when it appeared to have no relevance to our community or to the person for whom this public space has been renamed. Whenever the city council acts on a final design, the commissions charge and the ordinances to make a recommendation on the final design, and what the commission acts on is what you'll see constructed. You know, for example, the Fulton Bank Building on King Street, the Marriott Tower on, on King Street, the Ware Center. These all went through the Historical Commission, and what was presented to the Historical Commission with a recommendation into city council is what we see today. So there wasn't a back and forth after final action, and the way the ordinance is, it functions now, any later deviations from the approved design must return to the Historical Commission for review and recommendation, and then goes back to city council for final approval. So that's, you know, part of the dilemma I think we're running into at this point. We've already talked about how to design, how do the proposed facade treatment, how is it consistent with the design standards? I think that's still up in the air. And we've heard that it's supposed to evolve in time. A question, and maybe Ted V. Doc has answered to some extent, but is there a possibility for the architect to be given permission to come back with a design to the Historical Commission? It's part of the land development process, and this is one of the steps in the land development approval process. So the planning commission could act on a conditional approval of land development, but this, along with other possible conditions, would have to be satisfied before the city staff can issue building permits. So there is some, you know, issue with the process of getting through this step of final approval, so then, you know, building permits may be issued for construction. Again, that's part of the overall land development process. And I was concerned about, you know, how does this reflect the legacy of Barney Yule? The committee, the Yule Legacy Committee, had to address public art as part of their application. And, you know, I'm questioning, how do the brightly colored and rigid vertical tubing, how do they reflect the legacy of Barney Yule?
Paula?
Yes?
We're at four minutes, and I adore you, but can we?
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. So I think we've covered. I was concerned about, you know, the lack of involvement by local artists, but I think that has been addressed. And again, the question for council, what you're approving with this building will be an historic building in the future. So what you're approving, is that something you want people 50 years from now say this was representative of the early 21st century in Lancaster City? Thank you.
Thank you, Paula. Bring 'em on. I'm here till Thursday.
Hi, I'm Susie Hoover.
Hey, Susie.
Hi. Now, Joe, did you have a consultant who did the search nationally for, so you had a consultant who brought the suggestions in, and there were five people? Is that how that worked? He brought back five?
So yes, there was a consultant that was hired, and they, he brought forth 15 candidates, and we narrowed it down to five that the selection committee looked over.
Okay. Now, was that, bringing it down to five, was that done through the board, or was it done through the selection committee that included the parking authority, benchmark, all of that sort of thing? Did, who, who wound that down? Because there's two. There's the advisory board, and then, then there's the board, the group with the parking authority?
So it was done by myself in consultation with the Public Art Advisory Board.
With the who?
With the- The Public Art Advisory Board.
With your, with the city board?
Yes.
Okay. And so that was narrowed down to five. Okay. I have one for Ted over here. Was that with the screening, was that done by R&amp;R? No? Okay. The only reason I'm pointing this out, there is sort of, I do have a reason. I found the timeline for the, for the art board, for the city art board, and on July the 8th, the R&amp;R studio presented, was to present three concepts for art. And actually, one of them included incorporating a screen into the plaza. So I'm not gonna read the whole thing. Then, remember, on August the 5th, R&amp;R studio updated concepts, including an integrated screen in the library garage stair tower. So that was a screen. Then I'll go to number three, which is on September the 3rd, R&amp;R is being contracted by Hamel Associates to execute the design phase of the facade work. Costs came in high, and they are planning on trimming things significantly to stay within a $600,000 budget. Hamel is presenting to the Historical Commission for the building on September the 16th. I have a copy of the, excuse me, I have a copy of the R&amp;R studios in Miami, their scope narrative, "All the World's a Stage," and it really is quite descriptive. And when you get to the estimated budget, it said that the estimated budget for materials, fabrication, installation of the multicolored tube screen on the west side of the facade is $800,000. Extending the tube screen to the north, south, and east facing walls is about 44, which is about 4,400 square feet, will cost approximately an additional $350,000. So I think I'm just sort of looking at the cost of stuff. I'm a little conscious of that in the city. That's it.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Hoover.
Hello, I'm Jenny Shulder, and I'm an artist in the city. I just have a couple of points to make, I guess, as an artist, as a consumer of art, as a person that lives in the city, as someone who is concerned with wanting as much public input and involvement in our buildings that we see every day, that we're gonna walk past, we're gonna ride our bikes past, we're gonna jive past. And to me, as an artist, there really isn't a big distinction between art and architecture. To me, anything that I see is, can be, or anything that is intentionally built can be considered a piece of art. So when I look at these two renderings, I'm seeing two pieces of art. And in terms of design requirements, meeting, a practice, I totally respect and honor that, but I also see, to the point one of the previous speakers made, what building is gonna represent the Lancaster of the future. And to me, adding more brick and adding a design that seems to blend into the rest of the city, while I appreciate the fact that, you know, well, I don't know if I appreciate the fact that it's blending in. I like the vibrancy. I like the colors. I like the diversity of the building. I think that it can reflect a new Lancaster. And I also think that the rendering that the Public Art Board put forth is going to be more inclusive, and the reason why we're having this argument is because we don't know the final product. And it is exactly for that reason, the reason why we don't know the final product is because we want public input, and we want the public to be part of the process. So that's all I really have to say. I really think that you're, you're talking about two pieces of art that are gonna be built, and which one is gonna have more impact in the city, and have more impact in the community, and have their involvement. So.
Thank you, Ms. Shulder.
I'd like to say good evening to the mayor, president, and council members. Once again, I wanna say, express sincerest gratitude for honoring my father by passing a resolution for Yule Plaza.
Can you introduce yourself briefly, though?
I'm Denise Yule. I'm Barney Yule's daughter. My daughter told me not to come here and get all political, long-winded, and talking. The point I wanna make in this is, moving forward, communication. There needs to be more communication, whether it be between the departments, the authorities, and the Lancastrians. Yule Plaza has, now has a deeper passion for me, hoping that moving forward, there will be some uniqueness, not copyrighted, uniqueness that portrays Lancaster. That's what I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Christina Hausner. I just have a question, and that is the, what I think the mayor had referred to as a word cloud. Is that something that would be fixed and would be permanent, would be determined through input somehow, and it would always be that immutable? Because I thought it was something that would change periodically.
So that, as Mr. V. Doc, I believe, mentioned, that, this concept, which you can sort of, wasn't developed forward, so the exact nature and provenance of the word cloud was not, was not set. Is that correct, Mr. V. Doc? Did I?
Correct.
Right, but I'm talking-
I think to your, to your point, is it, does it change seasonally or annually or something like that?
Well, I'm talking, I meant the one that, where it says "All the world's a stage." Is it always gonna say that?
Uh-huh. So, I'm sorry. I thought you were referring to the word cloud in this first design.
No, I'm sorry. So I'm, yeah, I used the wrong term.
That's fine.
So I'm referring to the slogan, whatever you wanna call it, that says "All the world's a stage." Is that going to be something that would be permanent? Or would it change?
You can answer that if you want, Joe.
I mean, is it like the police station that changes the color of the lights seasonally?
The words that were proposed would be static. There's no electronic features to the, that concept.
Or lights.
Or lights. There's no lights intrinsic to it, any electricity.
And what would be, the second part of her question was, what would be the source? How would the words be determined?
Oh, yeah. I mean, that was something, that's something that we're excited about, is the opportunity, and I think there's actually additional, additional opportunities with this piece to engage the public, to, to source out literary quotes inspired by Barney's life, and a lot of ways that it could be, it could be really a public process.
But one would be selected, and it would always be there?
Yes, that's true.
Okay.
Again-
I'm just gonna express my opinion, which is that, as hard as it is to get people to agree on what is art, what's good art, what they like, it's gonna be really hard to figure out the one slogan that's gonna be up on that wall in letters that are, what, two stories tall. It's always gonna be there. Now, it's true, I don't live in Lancaster City, but I work at 150 North Queen, so I'm interested to know what I'm gonna be looking at out the window.
I definitely see your concern. And I, and just to reiterate again, this is an initial feasibility study concept, and we really, once the artists would get to work with the budget parameters that they have, I can't guarantee that there would be words on it still. And to your point of, of what the idea of narrowing it down, it would be kind of public input on literary quotes, and probably the library board, public art board, you know, narrowing it down to like, let's say, you know, five, and people could vote on it, that sort of thing. But again, it's, we're not really there.
Thank you, Joe. Mayor, did you have? I, I mean, Ms. Hausner, Hausner, I got that right?
Yes.
I will say, on any given day, sitting up here, if we make 55% of you happy, that's a victory, and the margins are even slimmer for art, so your point is well taken. Who was? Mayor, please.
It's much more fun. Arthur Morris, 434 West Chestnut Street. It's much easier sitting back here than up here. I thought it was interesting that Joe just mentioned that they're gonna change or come up with a design that meets the budget, and the budget is being overspent, so it's gotta be reduced. So that's a requirement that the artists must meet, so there's limitations. I stand here simply to say that when you integrate art within the building, and if the mayor said this the same way, but you're asking for it, when the points are made here that we don't want artists from out of the area, I think that misses the point. One is, we want to make sure that artists in the area are at least considered. But in addition to that, if an artist is given the task to do this job and to come up with a design, they should have an integrated art in a building to meet the requirements of the Historical Commission. If you do not do that going forward, it would almost mean to me that any building that's built anywhere in the city, all you need to do is integrate it within the building, and you can design artwork, whatever kind of artwork you want. That is the weakness in this whole thing. And so it's incumbent on council, and the mayor, and the Arts Commission to work within the requirements of the Historical Commission, that they're trying to take into account for the whole city, and come up with a piece of artwork that fits within those requirements. Not avoid meeting them, but fit within them, or else, if you don't do this, you're destined to have the same problem that exists when anybody wants to integrate art into a building itself. That's what they can come up with. Personally, I have a statue in front of my house, six foot two. I didn't want a pig. I told the artist, I wanted a runner. You may have a little bit of flexibility. I have a daffodil mural on the front of my house. It's painted. I didn't have to come to the Historical Commission, because it's not integral to the building. I told the person, "I want a daffodil." How you design it is gonna be within you, but I want a daffodil. So it seems to me, you tell the artists, meet their requirements, but come up with something unique art-wise. That's your challenge, but I would encourage you to try to move in that direction, rather than not live within the requirements of the Historical Commission. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Sampaio.
Hello, good evening, everyone. Excuse that. You don't wanna see my hair right now. Thank you so much. My name is Emerson Sampaio, and first of all, Joe Davis, good job, because this is not easy. But there's a lot of love in this room, and like John said, a lot of good intention. The Historical Commission, I think you guys do an amazing work in preserving, you know, just everything that's beautiful about this, this county, and this, this city specifically. You know, one of the things that I was debating, like, do I stand up, because there's so many great points being raised, but the one thing, when, okay, if I look at the rendering, which it is, it's a rendering, so it's, from my understanding, as a member on the Public Arts Advisory Board, it's not the final, the final product, but it's, it's, it's a concept. The, the phraseology there, "All the world's a stage," is, I guess, right now, it's a placeholder, but it's also trying to set a tone. What do we want out of this, out of this facade? What do we wanna project exactly? And for, for me, with the work that we've been doing across the city, specifically in the south, in the south side, you know, in partnership with your cause, because it's our cause, we're trying to project something that would inspire people. You know, so when I, when I ask, well, what, what will inspire someone, and I get your point, that to some, a good morning isn't well-taken, you know? That wasn't your point, but, you know, some people might not like a good morning, but it's well-intended. It's well wishes. So I'm- So I'm excited to see what our engagement with the community will be, because as we've seen in the past few years, really getting community engagement doesn't, can I say it? Sometimes it does start after we sign something off and say, okay, yeah, pass this along. Now gather the whole community, gather the kids as well, and see what comes out of it. Sometimes kids say the darnedest things, and that might be the best thing that'll go up there. And sometimes it'll be an artist or an architect. But I just love that we're repurposing something, that there's so much intention, and that for the first time, the Public Arts Advisory Board is saying, let's get involved in the planning process, in the design process, early. So like Joe was saying, this would set a precedent. I heard one of my good friends, you know, say that this, that the Public Arts Advisory Board is trying to set a precedent, and we are. We are trying to set a precedent, that we will be involved in the early design process across this city. We've been going to the neighborhoods. Thank you, Mayor, for encouraging this. But we've been involving with the, with the neighborhoods to see exactly what are some of the things, what are the commonalities coming out of each quadrant? And so, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Emerson.
I'm Moira Jean Fitzgerald, and I wasn't going to speak tonight, because I think you all know pretty much how I feel. But I would like to ask a question, because I keep hearing these inclusive words, this community gathering of thoughts and spirits and artists and all that. And yet, we have a historic commission employee working in the same building as a public art employee, and neither of the two have ever met to discuss some of these issues? I'm just wondering. And then I'm wondering, who is this seven, the, you keep talking about, I know you have the advisory board, but then you had this selection committee. Who are those seven people? Did they represent different areas of our community? Who, who are they? That's my question. But my statement is, I will be so bold as to say, this is not public art. This is design elements on the facade of a building. And the reason I can say that is because of the public art pieces, which are in the PR piece that Joanna put out last Thursday, those are public art, and each one of them has a story behind it. This has no story. This is design elements on the facade of a building. Therefore, it is not public art. But please tell me who's on the selection committee.
Moira Jean, is that the whole of your comments?
Well, I might just make a little statement after that, but that'd be it.
Joe, if you'd like to, you can answer.
Okay. The people on the selection committee was Sophie Roman from the Public Art Advisory Board, Amy Moorfield from the Public Art Advisory Board, Libby Modern from the Public Library Board, Ted Vdok and his colleague Marjana from Hamel Associates, and Susan Bleacher from the Parking Authority. And, was that seven? Did I leave somebody out? Thank you. And Andy Gilberg from the Construction Team.
Though I am going to make a statement. I, there are a lot of people who have served before you all, and a lot of people who have worked at City Hall. You know, Paula Art, lots of rebel rousers have come before this body before. And that's how this city got to be, this great city, where somebody would want to spend, you know, lots of money developing downtown. But we got here because we put into place ordinances, where you're not supposed to make deals behind closed doors. And, you know, you don't tear down a building and have a parking lot, or you put the HC into, into being. I would say, respect the historic commission and build the library, but not that far.
Thank you, Moira Jean.
Counselor, I can also answer the first question, if it's helpful. I think it's a very valuable point that you brought up about the coordination between the historical preservation function and public art. I have been in my role as community planning director for just over three months now. I've spent most of the time in that tenure thinking about how we can approach many of these projects in a more holistic way. Just in the last few weeks, we have moved Joe Davis, the public art manager, into community planning. So now both the historic preservation specialist and Joe are under my purview, and I think we're learning a lot from this process writ large. But I would also say that the reason why this has been challenging is because it is challenging. We're at a really interesting nexus between processes and art and architecture. And I'll go back to something that Joe said earlier, is I think we, we kind of need to embrace that, that conflict, and then hopefully through further public engagement, we can refine the design.
Thank you, Mr. Delfer. Chris, please.
Thank you. My name's Jeremy Wach. I'm an artist. I have done public art for the city of Lancaster. The bike racks outside this very building were mine. Also an associate professor, teaching art at Pennsylvania College of Art and Design, although I'm here speaking for myself and not representing the college. Having been involved in the initial discussions and writing what, the guidelines for what actually became the Public Art Advisory Board, as a participant in that, that blossomed into having an art, public art director in a city our size, I'm really excited to see how far this has come, to the point where we're having such a serious conversation as we are now. And I believe there are some extremely challenging issues with what is, I think, well-meaning and really well-grounded rules and regulations about what kind of buildings we should have, and then also looking to our future and embracing the arts community that has been so integral in the revitalization of downtown. In my time here, not being a natural Lancastrian, but coming in from Nebraska, at the very turning point, seeing the last vestiges of what downtown used to be until what it is now, this is really exciting. And I just want to say that everything that is said about the process for this aligns with everything I've experienced as a public artist myself, doing commissions. They are not going to spend their time pro bono to make a finished work until they're legitimately hired, and that takes approval. So, yeah, they're going to give you the rough indications, and then when you actually hire them, they're going to work their darnedest to make sure that it's something we can all be proud of. And that's the point where the public gets to participate. If we need to make some recommendations to them that guides that process, so it meets with the historical advisory board, I'm certain that they would be happy to take those on. The beautiful thing about being an artist is we see challenges as the main point of why we do what we do. Set more boundaries in front of us, and you'll get a better product out of us. And so this conversation has been really enlightening for me, because I've seen all of the nuances and all of the way that these challenging, differing opinions and differing goals have come together. And I'm really looking forward to see how you all, as our elected officials, take these differing opinions and chart our way forward. Because I don't think it's one or another. I don't think anyone has the, the ground to say, this is exactly what needs to happen. I think it has to be amalgamation, it has to be a hybrid, and that's why you are all charged with such an important role. So thank you so much, your patience in hearing everybody's opinions has been unbelievable. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Krista Freibom. I am a member also of the Public Art Advisory Board, and I actually am a new member, but I've been volunteering with the public art program for a few years. And first of all, I definitely encourage everyone here to either come Saturday or tell people who are also interested in learning more about this to come on Saturday to the info session. There's flyers over there. And I also just want to encourage people to just be involved. There's obviously a real interest in this. I mean, there's been like 10 articles in the paper about this in the last month, and there was like one article about like, you know, 101 North Queen. That's because people, this is like starting conversations. People obviously care. You all are here. You know, this is valuable time, and I really appreciate that everyone is here and speaking out. But I also think that the other thing to understand about the public art program is, besides Joe, you know, it is really volunteer-based, and like, even our board, you know, we're all spending our free time doing, you know, coming to the, to celebrate Lancaster and tabling and going to, doing community outreach and doing all this stuff. And I think that there's definitely issues and conflict between the historical commission and, and, you know, our brief as the public art board and our tenure plan and how to achieve this. And I'm not sure I know the answer to that, but I think that I definitely agree with what Joe said about, you know, if this doesn't happen, I think that is a major setback for the public art program and for Lancaster. I think there's definitely a way to proceed with conditions and stipulations so that, you know, we can also learn from this. And then, you know, if there is a next time where public art is integrated into a facade, this obviously doesn't happen again. I think that that is, it's just unpleasant for everyone, for it to be this contentious and seems unnecessary. So that's all I got.
Thank you.
My name's Linda Wideman, and I'm a city dweller, and I was not going to speak either. But I thought Susie Hoover brought up some very interesting information as to the cost, because I can tell you that if this is all going to be private funds that are going to pay for the art, that's going to all come out of the art institutions, the people who are usually generous to them, are all going to be paying for this public art. Now, I've seen the figure of $15,000 for concept and $60,000 for finished art, but what Susie said was very different. And I would like someone to say, what is the budget? Where will the money come from? Thank you.
Quite simply, there are two fees to the artist. There's the $15,000 that the city paid. The $600,000 budget, which is 2% of the construction cost for the garage, is supposed to be all-inclusive of their fee and the, and the construction of the artwork on the building.
And am I understanding that, I'm sorry, may I? Am I understanding that that $600,000 is the cost of the facade, period? Like, we have to put a facade on this. It needs to, it needs to attach to the building, it needs to withstand wind loads, it needs to whatever, it needs to circulate air, all of those things. So am I just correct that that is a one-for-one, or no?
So I will defer to my architect on the rendering on the left, if he can, if he has any idea of what, since we did stop that process early on, Ted, did you come up with, did you break out that portion of the project?
The, the process that went towards establishing the budget essentially began with the concept design that you see here on the left of the screen. We took that to a level of detail that was adequate for the construction manager to include that design in their, their most recent construction cost estimate that was done over the summer. So as they prepared their overall cost estimate for it, they itemized everything that was associated with the folded metal screen facade treatment, and that was the cost of $600,000. So the approach that was taken on this project was that we look at it as a one-for-one replacement. That portion of the facade comes off, the money's allocated to that, the $600,000 is then given to the artist as their budget for the project. So in the absence of any other influence of funds for the art portion of the project, that was how we arrived at that $600,000 budget that Larry's referring to.
Thank you, Mr. Vdok. And to Mrs. Wideman's question, to the final portion of her question, what's the providence of the funds that will pay for this building? Because I assume it's all the same source.
Right. Well, this is, as it's been well-publicized, this project is a Chris-funded project.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Vdok. Oh. See, I shouldn't have said anything.
Paula Dax again. I forgot to mention, I almost was a city resident, and I walked away tonight. I don't have the ordinance in front of me. I don't have it memorized. I know the Heritage Conservation District ordinance does give a limit of time for the historical commission. I believe it was 75 days. 75 days. It gives them the opportunity to table and then come back and then, you know, tweak it some more before they have to make an up or down recommendation or a recommendation with conditions. I don't know if the ordinance ties the council into that, because I, I would be concerned about turning down the recommendation of the historical commission, not when council doesn't know what the building is going to look like. As I said in the past, the, what council is acting on, under that ordinance, is the final design. If you don't know what the final design would be, I don't know how, you know, you could act on it. So maybe it's checking the ordinance to see if there's a time limit for city council to act on a recommendation. I don't recall that.
Yeah. From, from the ordinance, section 155-10, "The city council shall, within 60 days following council's first consideration of the application, at a council meeting, take formal action on the issuance of a certificate of appropriateness." So we have a 60-day window from our first consideration. We had some, Bernie, we were talking about this previously, is that from the first time it shows up at this meeting, or from the first time it shows up at the council meeting? We've done this dance before.
Actually, I'm sorry, I've forgotten that. I do, I do recall that we had this on the last regular meeting, and it was tabled. I do, I would have to check with the solicitor whether or not that counts as the beginning of consideration, where the clock starts.
Okay. Please, and thank you. Yes, Mr. Funk. That's a great name, by the way. I gotta say.
I'd just like to make one final statement. I think what I wish had happened in this process, which may have, you know, alleviated some of these, these tensions, was, you know, we saw, we saw the original concept in May, and sometime after that, it was decided to incorporate public art into the project, and the design was completely changed. The historical commission was kept in the dark until the design was presented to us in May, or I'm sorry, in September. If we had been given an indication that the design was changing, and then if we had been brought into the process before September, then we could have offered some guidance, maybe we wouldn't be in this place right now. And if, if public art is ever included as part of a design, a building element, again, I hope that happens.
Here.
As, as a courtesy, the historical commission reviews conceptual designs, offers guidance on conformance with the design standards without, without having to provide, without having to, without the applicant having to submit a formal application, without the preservation specialist providing review, without us voting yes or no. We just say, you know, we provide guidance. If that had happened in the four months from the initial application, or the initial presentation, you know, until the September meeting, maybe we wouldn't be here tonight.
I just want to say, Steve, I think that's a really great comment, and moving forward, I could see it being productive to have a member of the historical commission on a selection committee of a project like this, you know, as we move forward. I think there's so many ways that, that it could, we could collaborate.
That's a discussion ongoing being had. I guess, would, in with, within, now what is, I guess, entirely your part of the store, Chris, but yeah, that's, that's something that we're talking about. Thank you, Stephen. Thank you, Joe.
Just because I've heard this all night about what could have been or should have been.
Moira Jean, I need you at the microphone. I need you to keep it brief. Thank you. Thank you.
I will, keep it brief. I just, I just have to make this statement, that we have a reputation for being an arts destination because of all the independently-owned galleries in this town, and I talked to every single one of them, and every single one of them was deeply upset, to the point of tremendous emotion, as well as being logical. If this truly was a reach-out to the community, then I wonder why the Public Art Advisory Board did not reach out to any of the gallery owners. They were all excluded.
Thank you, Moira Jean. Okay. Let me say, thank you all very much for bearing with and for the inquisitive and courteous way you all conducted yourselves this evening. So far be it from us to, to shirk our responsibility, I think we are going to, in the next eight days, need to go into our respective holes or, or come out of them, and come to a decision. So I will go ahead and move that this, I forget which item number it is, but that the recommendation of the Historic Commission be forwarded to, yes, Bernie? Oh, okay. Be forwarded to the first meeting of council in November for review by city council as a whole.
Second.
Any additional council comments?
I appreciate the conversation we had today, so thank you, everybody, for your comments.
Okay. Mr. Capera.
What question did Joe? Upon hiring the architect, or the artist, does council need to act before you can hire the architect to do the work? One way, yeah, okay, thank you.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, Mr. President, that concludes the Community Planning Committee. Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Bernie, if you'd be so kind as to just share your report via email with council, I think you already did.
It's already been done, yes.
We'll review it. Sorry to cut it short, but I think you deserve to go home as well, so.
Motion to adjourn.
Correct. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion to adjourn.
We got a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.